Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 20th. No, May 20th, 2020. Oh, my goodness. Before we begin tonight, I will also give the disclaimer that I give all the time that this meeting is being held remotely and pursuant to Governor Baker's order of March 10th, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, allowing this meeting to be held virtually. It is being broadcast live on Charter Cable 193 and also recorded and available for viewing in the next day or so. I want to also remind the public that you will remain on mute except for when we get to the public speak portion of the agenda, and then we will ask each of you if you would like to speak, and we will allow you the opportunity to come off mute and do that. Also wanted to make just a really brief announcement before we start that the issue with the appropriation on the fire will not be, there is no discussion on that tonight, so if you came to talk about that, you are perfectly welcome to do that, but it's not, it'll be moved to finance, and then we will address it at that time. So, we're not voting tonight if anyone was thinking of that. So, Barbara, I will take the roll call.
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Bill Lynch?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Here.
And Owen Zerret.
Present.
Okay, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of May 6th, and what we are approving are the minutes that were sent on May 13th, May 15th, as an amendment to the original minutes that were sent.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Put a clarification or a question, I just don't remember, and I didn't see it on the minutes, President Coniff. Counselor Derby, did we, did we move for extensions to, there's a couple of agenda items that, on the current agenda, say that they're expiring, did we move to extend those last time? I don't remember.
I believe we did.
Salem, we can't really hear you.
You're muted.
Are you near a microphone?
I believe we did.
There we go. Okay. So, Counselor Zerret, is that not reflected in the minutes?
It's not. The, it's the plastics and the cannabis topics have a date of 5/19/20, listen next to them, unless I'm looking at that wrong.
No, they do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it in my notes that it was extended.
I think we should just do it again tonight, just to...
Okay, just a question.
Great. Any further discussion? Barbara, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Here.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret.
Owen?
Sorry, aye.
All right, motion passes nine to zero. At this time, it is time for public speak. If there is anyone from the public who would like to speak, there is a, at the bottom of your screen, there should be a hand that you can raise, or if you want to go off and show us on video your hand being raised to speak, that's fine, too.
The hand is listed under reactions at the bottom of the page.
Okay, Dan, I saw you first, Dan, you can go.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, thank you very much. Good evening all, hope everybody's well, hope your families are well. My name is Dan Constantine, and I'm from Melinda Lane, I'm also a member of the East Hampton Fire Department. As some of you may or may not know, this week, the third week in May, is National EMS Week. EMS Week was designated so by President Gerald Ford in 1974, and this year's theme is Ready Today, Preparing Tomorrow. Pretty ironically enough, the theme was picked before this pandemic that we're in. Our EMTs and paramedics have rallied to continue to support the people in East Hampton who are affected by this crisis, all while still responding to the everyday emergencies that continue to occur in our community. They have done this while dealing with the challenges, especially in the beginning, of the lack of access to appropriate PPE, personal protective equipment, and fellow workers dealing with that who were stricken with COVID themselves. Now more than ever, it is important that we honor and celebrate our EMS professionals who are supporting the health and well-being of our community. So, how could you do that? Well, first, I want to address our elected officials. Mayor, City Council, again, thank you all these years for your support for everything that we do. I realize that the financial future does not look too promising, and I realize that you may have to make some unpopular decisions. Please always remember the priorities first for the community. First responders have always been the first line of defense for a community. In an ever-changing world, this has even become more technical and challenging. EMS providers respond to cut figures, heart attacks, psychiatric emergencies, overdoses, falls, stabbings, and the list goes on. Each time, we are asked to make things better. Sometimes we can, and sometimes we just cannot. Moving forward into the future, we need your support for new technology and training to better equip us to deliver emergency medical service to a new, evolving medical landscape. We are here for you, so I ask, you know, please in the future be here for us, like you have in the past. To the community of East Hampton, thank you for always showing your support for us. This past November, we celebrated 20 years in our safety complex. Without your support for this and other key projects throughout the years, the department we have now would surely be different. Please stay safe during this COVID-19 thing, and remember, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And fire workers in EMS, the men and women of East Hampton Fire, know that what you do is so very important to this community. When bad things happen, the community counts on you to help them through it. And through the years, I've seen so many acts of professionalism, kindness, mercy, and medical prowess. I am proud to work with each and every one of you. Know that you, in what you do, impact lives in so many ways. Please keep up the great work, and thank you for all you do. Happy EMS Week. Thank you very much for your time.
Peg, you're muted.
I see that, yes. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay. All right, thanks, Dan. At this point, it's a little early for the public hearing, so are there any communications from elected officials, boards, and committees? Counselor Zerret?
Thank you, let me just refer to my notes here. Can you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Just a few things, once again, I mentioned it kind of in the middle of Property Committee, but it is cleanup month here, usually that's the first Saturday and/or Sunday of the month. It's, they're doing a whole virtual month, you can go onto the Nash Pond page on Facebook, and they have instructions there on how to participate virtually, there's an app called Literati where you can geotag litter that you pick up. Also, while I'm talking about that, this is the first year, I don't know how long the history is, but, you know, we were supposed to have the Pride Parade in Northampton, and East Hampton Pride participated last year, and we're really excited to participate again this year, so Pride Month is coming up in June, so I'm trying to reflect on ways that we can virtually do something in the city in recognition of GLPTQ Pride Month. Just a quick congratulations, we have a new state senator as of last night, Mr. John Velas. I want to thank Barb for organizing such a smooth election, it was, you know, pretty seamless going in there and voting, and certainly organizing and coordinating all of the, all the mail-in voting, Barb has always a fantastic job. All the department heads seem to be doing a great job in the midst of this crisis, and again, I want to thank Bree at the Health Department for all of her good work with messaging, and her and the members of the DPW and Water Department for putting up those great signs around town, reminding us what precautions we should take. You know, restaurants are adapting to kind of uncharted territory, they're doing a great job, and in the midst of this pandemic, which is certainly threatening all businesses, and I want to thank our businesses as well for being patient and safe as things start to reopen. And on that note, just, you know, looking around town, and especially with the reopening plan, I just, I want to caution people to be smart, just because we're starting a phased reopening doesn't mean that things are going to return to quote-unquote "normal" soon, so, you know, people are generally doing a great job, but there, I'm sure there's also a lot of cabin fever going on, so we have to proceed forward slowly, and we as community leaders really need to try to, you know, set the tone in terms of the work we're doing, wearing masks when appropriate, socially distancing when appropriate. And, so, you know, we're moving forward slowly, and thank you Mayor LaChappelle for your participation on that State Advisory Committee and the ongoing work you're doing. And then lastly, President Coniff, you know, I don't know if this is what you signed up for, but I really appreciate the job you're doing, running Zoom meetings and making way more PowerPoint presentations I'm sure you ever expected to, and I appreciate all the extra attention you're putting to making sure that we're all clued in to the technological challenges that have been put forward to us with Zoom, so, thanks, and also just thanks to everyone, my colleagues on the council, for all the extra work you're putting in in the midst of this pandemic. This concludes.
Lindsey, is that a, Lindsey's raising her hand, Peg.
Okay. I don't know why I keep going on mute, I apologize. Go ahead, Lindsey.
I was just going to refer to the last meeting where I was talking about the cannabis industry, and I was going to write a letter, but from what I understand, they are opening again on Monday, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the letter kind of felt not necessary. I am just going to write a letter from myself, just in terms of like going forward, if we have to kind of backtrack to reconsider, you know, how the treatment of the cannabis industry, so, that's what I thought about it at that point.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. It's about 6:12. Dan, do you have anything you'd like to make any announcements on?
Only that, as Chair of the CPA Committee, I am very proud to announce that the council will be getting an appropriation for $300,000 in rent relief. Under the Affordable Housing Tenant of the CPA, we're allowed to do this. It will help a lot of, up to 100 households in East Hampton for an income area gap where they can't be served at the lower income levels, and I'm very proud of it because it's something we can actually do immediately, and it will be restricted to East Hampton residents, of course, but I'm proud of that, and it was approved unanimously Monday night, and you'll be getting the appropriation next meeting. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Dan. The only thing I'd like to say is that, and this is really to the public, we are in the midst of trying to figure out our technology. If this continues on for months and months and months, what we cannot put a hold on is the business of the city, and there are public hearings that we need to engage with the public on that need to start happening. We had been putting them off because we thought maybe this would be short-term. It probably isn't, by the time we all get together again, it's going to be far too into the future, so, we are looking at a different way to hold public hearings than this particular methodology. It's still using productive Zoom, but it's in a webinar format, so, we're going to, you're going to have a lot of advance notice if and when we switch our format to that, but we're kind of in the throes of working our way through the technology, but what I want to say is that we're really, really trying to find a way to let the public engage with us in a way that is efficient, and is orderly, and also fair and transparent, and anything that is a remote functionality just has problems with checking all those boxes, so we're going to do the best that we can while continuing to move forward with the business of the city, and you will be well-informed ahead of time if we're going to change up how we do things, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Coming attractions. At this time, it is 6:15, and I...
I move the public hearings be opened?
Second.
Motion is second, open the public hearings, any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Public hearings are open, Counselor Rist?
Yes, we have a number of appropriations to approve. The first one is a $3,000 appropriation for postage, and this is required because that, most of these, a lot of these appropriations are end-of-budget-year deficits that need to be covered, and the postage is necessary because we've had to mail out payroll, more so than get them picked up at the office at Town Hall, and secondly, we've had a lot more mail-in voting, for instance, so there was a need for more postage. So, that's basically why we're doing this, and we need to have that budget fixed. Any questions? From the public? If you're a member of the public...
Counselor Peak?
Oh, sorry, Peg.
Yeah, I was just wondering, in the long run, is it, you know, for my day job, for instance, I don't, they don't mail me a physical paycheck, it's all, you know, direct deposit, is that something that we can be sort of pushing for more people to do to save money on this going forward?
Well, I'll have to refer to Val on that, but I don't know if you can force people to do direct deposit, Val or the mayor, do you have an answer to that? Jen?
That's Jen, yeah.
Ah, you're muted, Jen.
Now you're good, okay.
I'm good?
You're good, all right.
I mean, just to jump in here, Jen does payroll, not Val or the mayor, so, just a clarification.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that we spend the money correctly in the right, in the right bucket. Pay the right people, yeah.
All right. Now who to ask? Thank you for the clarification.
So, yes, is the short answer to that question, I actually reached out to Emily in Personnel, and our payroll system has a, like a employee system that goes along with it that we already have in place, and mainly what it is, is that you can, for anyone who have email addresses for any, any person in the city getting paid, they will get like an email link to their direct deposit. So, that, if we had had a lot of people signed up for this, that would have saved us a ton in postage over this whole, whole thing. The problem is, is that because it was a new, a newer system, a lot of the older, or, no, I'm sorry, not older, a lot of the people who have been with the city for a long time don't have email addresses in their personnel records, so it's a matter, Emily and I spoke about, you know, making a push for doing that as we get back to some sort of normal, so that, you know, in the future, it won't cost us for the printing and the postage, so.
Jen, is that true also for stipends and other monies that the city pays non-quote-unquote employees?
As, as long as it's paid through the payroll system, then yes, like if, like if it's mildly...
That's one thing that always bothered me, is that I was getting like a fake check that said, "This is not a check."
Right.
I don't want that, and you're telling me if I give you an email address, I don't have to get that.
Correct. You'll still get, you'll get an email with a link to it, so you can look at it, just to make sure it's right, but, yes.
And that's the things like deductions and other things that might be on that.
Yeah, it's actually the exact same slip, except electronic.
Okay. Does, does employees have to, employees, counselors, do we have to sign up for that email, or is that automatic now?
Well, we have to have the emails in the system, and that's kind of where Emily and I started off with this, is she has to figure out whose emails aren't in the system, and then, you know, we're, someone's going to have to go in and enter those emails, so it's going to be a bit of a process, and it'll probably be done in a minute at a time.
Jen, is it, is it, it has to be a personal email, not the government email?
No, you can have it sent to your, to your government email.
So, if we have government email, you can send the payroll thing there, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
So, low-hanging fruit here, you know, folks like us who have an easthamptonma.gov email address, although we need to do for that to just be populated into their personnel file?
The short answer to that again is yes, I don't know if you will need to actually sign a form stating that you are okay with receiving it electronically versus in the paper form, so that's why, you know, I, Emily and I are kind of at the beginning phases of doing this and trying to determine the best way to get everyone who wants it onboard without, you know, making more chaos than is necessary.
Okay, great, well, thank you, that's...
That's great, Jen, thank you. Anyone else, either city councilor or someone from the public have any comments? All right, Dan?
Hearing none, I move that the full council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is $3,000 to be transferred from the reserve fund, to be transferred to central purchasing postage account, $3,000, for the purpose of providing funds for the rest of the fiscal year 2020, for postage costs that have increased due to mailings of paychecks and items normally distributed in City Hall due to COVID-19. Excuse me, COVID-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to provide funds for the remainder of the fiscal year for postage costs. Any further discussion?
This was approved three to zero by the Finance Committee.
All right, Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
The next transfer is the reserve...
Hang on, Dan, Dan, please hold.
I'm sorry.
We didn't hear, I just want to make sure we hear Owen.
That was aye, aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did hear.
Motion passes, motion passes on the additional money for postage. Go ahead, Counselor Rist.
Sorry. Next one is a $200 request from the city clerk for legal advertising for the city council. She has money left in her budget, but she's concerned that she might need a little more to finish out the year. It's a $200 appropriation, and if you have questions on this, I refer you to our city clerk, Barbara the Bombard. It was passed by the Finance Committee three to zero. Any questions? Seems straightforward. How about the public, anybody from the public? Okay. Should I proceed now, President?
I would love it if you would.
I move, I move that the full council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is $200 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $200, to be transferred to city council advertising account, $200, for the purpose of providing funds for the rest of the fiscal year 2020 for the city council legal advertising.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to provide funds for the remainder of the fiscal year 2020 for city council legal advertising, $200. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Barbara, did you hear Tom Peak?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, but, so I just wanted to make sure.
I think I did.
Okay. All right, motion passes nine to zero. Next.
The next is an interdepartmental transfer to deal with budget shortfalls in the dispatch area. These shortfalls are typical at the end of the year, and the Finance Committee approved them three to zero. Chief Alberti is here, and he is familiar with this and is in charge of dispatch, if you have questions, but they are typical things that happen at the end of the year in many of our accounts, so Finance Committee approved them, of course. If you have questions for Chief Alberti.
Counselor Zerret?
Just quickly, Chief, how does this compare, I don't remember if we had to make a supplemental appropriation last year for this, did we have to do that?
We did, we did last year, and the year before, we did an internal transfer, because we were really close to the end of the budget year, from my department, actually. So, this, this number, this $42,000, is combined with a $55,000 remaining grant that we have remaining for, this will get, so the $42,000 and the $55,000 grant will get us through June 30th in dispatch, so we would be actually appropriating even more money, but not for the $55,000, or requesting to appropriate more money, but not for the $55,000 grant. So, to Counselor Rist's point, these, these shortfalls do happen, but particularly, and you'll notice in the dispatch budget for FY21, that we seek to really fully fund it so we upgrade this next year, at best we can, anyway. But yeah, so we did appropriate last, last year and the year before, and again, without the grant, we'd be requesting much more money.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. I don't see any other hands, Dan.
Anybody from the public on this?
Don't see any.
Okay, I will move that the full council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested, I'm sorry, interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $42,000. It'll be coming from the reserve account, $42,000. Two, full-time dispatch salary, $22,674. Part-time dispatch salary, $9,992. Dispatch holiday salary, $8,033. And dispatch overtime, $1,301, for a total of $42,000, for the following purpose, to provide funds for the rest of the fiscal year 2020 for dispatch salaries due to budget shortfall.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of $42,000 for the remainder of fiscal year 2020 for dispatch salaries. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zerret?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero. Next, Dan?
Yes, the next is a supplemental appropriation. It is coming from the Enterprise retained earnings to deal with the wastewater treatment Connecticut outfall root cutting. As you remember, we passed a large appropriation from Enterprise to fix the outflow pipe that comes from the wastewater treatment plant to the river. This outflow pipe, also, this, that appropriation allowed us to examine the pipe, and there is a great many roots, and what Mr. Nudelman told us was these roots are common, especially when there's, when the pipe is down. Unfortunately, he's not here this evening, I invited him. This is, this is kind of preventative, we would be able to do this, but most of the pipes in town, these pipes do get roots on occasion, and this is in-house work, I believe, although I'm hoping the mayor can correct me, I'm pretty sure it's being done by, well, might be done by the contractor that's repairing the pipe, but I'm not sure of that, I don't recall. This Enterprise retained earnings will have $1,208,678 left in its budget after this, I think that was right, was I right on that, Bill? I think I was. So, it's to clear the roots in the pipe after, so that when the pipe is repaired, the roots won't impact, create a barrier to the wastewater coming out of the pipe. I don't have any, well, the mayor may be able to answer questions, but unfortunately, Mr. Nudelman isn't here this evening.
Any questions from any of the counselors? Counselor Lynch?
Just adding to it... Uh, just adding to it, um, some of the conversation in case there was some, uh, uh, questions on how it happens or whatever. Apparently they go into the joint, uh, searching for water and then when we shut off the pipe, they continue searching for water. So they continue to grow down the pipe. And part of the issue that we had was that we are going through scoping it with cameras and we're unable to continue going down all the way through the pipe to see, uh, the repairs that were needed. So this will allow them to remove the pipes, uh, the roots out of the pipe. And Dan asked a good question in the meeting, um, if, if this will, uh, open up Pandora's box in a sense. Um, and they don't think that it will. There's no, you know, they're, they don't think the roots cause damage, uh, further down the line. So this should be, uh, the final, um, uh, money needed to repair this, this project.
Thank you, councillor Lynch. That's excellent. Your memory is better than mine or your notes are better.
Councillor Zaret?
This is a quick question. I don't know if you'll be able to answer it since, um, Greg's not here. But did they talk about whether there is, uh, technology, uh, or infra, or materials available to, to root proof, uh, the, the repair? Like, sort of like we have in the, I mean, I know it's a totally different thing, but like in the bike path, you can put things in to prevent root undergrowth under the asphalt. Can they do that with drainage pipes? So that we don't deal with this in the future? Or is that just kind of, uh, business as usual? That they'll have to make repairs like this occasionally?
Uh, it's an excellent question. I don't recall that being asked at the meeting, councillor Lynch or councillor Coniff. Do you remember that? I don't think it was asked.
No, I don't recall that being asked. I do recall though, that he said this is not uncommon. And my thought would be that if there was something to prevent it, we would take those measures. But it sounds like it's a very common phenomena with, uh, pipes of this nature.
Especially when a pipe doesn't have water in it.
Councillor Kozinski?
Uh, I, uh, recall the meeting and it's a common, uh, occurrence as the councillors have mentioned. I recall the discussion and I believe Greg said that there would be a sleeve fitted inside of the pipe, which a material that will then go around the sleeve, which then will keep the roots as best you can from coming in. Nothing, I, these roots are, are very thirsty. They're going to find a way. But I think it's kind of like a chimney. You put a sleeve sometimes inside a chimney, fill it with concrete material to rebuild the chimney and rather than take the, each brick out. So I think, uh, it'll be much better than it currently is.
Thank you, councillor. That is, I do recall that, the sleeve. Yes, that's excellent. It is not a preventative. It is a, kind of helps to reduce the possibility, but it does help. Anybody else? Members of the public?
No, don't see anybody.
We kind of have to do this, otherwise, uh, we'll have a problem with, um, the DEP because we've been trying to get this pipe fixed for months. Um, the finance committee did approve this three to zero. So with the president's permission, I will move it.
Please.
I move that the full council approved the following appropriation. The amount requested is $140,000 to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $140,000 to be transferred to wastewater treatment plant Connecticut downfall root cutting account, $140,000 for the following purpose, to remove roots growing in the outfall pipe before it can, it can be repaired.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appropriate $140,000 from retained earnings, enterprise retained earnings to the wastewater treatment Connecticut downfall root cutting account to remove roots growing in the outfall pipe before it can be repaired. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Barbara?
Ed Coniff. Hi. Dalem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Bill Lynch.
Yes.
Hi.
Uh, Dan Rist.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Hi.
Motion passes nine to zero and I apologize for the dog barking in background.
I move that the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearings. Barbara?
Ed Coniff.
Uh, yes.
Dalem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
JP Kozinski.
Yes.
Will Lynch.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Yeah.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero. Uh, that is it for the public hearings and we will now move on to mayor communications. Mayor LaChapelle.
Good evening. Um, okay. So I am, I'm going to start with a couple of, of just quick, um, things. The mask giveaway, uh, that the Department of Health put together last weekend, gave away, um, over 1,700 masks, adult masks and about 160 children's masks. And folks are encouraged to email health@easthamptonma.gov, uh, to request a mask. We're still delivering them. We have, uh, uh, Jackie and Bree in the health department, along with the council on aging are doing an amazing job getting masks out to anyone who needs one. Also mask donations, um, can be dropped off at 32 Payson in the lobby. Um, and we will, we will distribute them. A quick reminder that, uh, face coverings, uh, are best and the best PP for those of us who are walking around and we should save surgical and N95 masks are for first responder, um,
Mayor, you're breaking up.
As they firsthand, um, huh?
You're breaking up. I don't know.
Yes.
And your, your video is breaking up.
Could be. I don't know.
Maybe your, your computer's tired of zooming. Anyway, keep trying, I guess.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So, uh, the president, Coniff, if you could put up my first document. It's the PowerPoint and I, I'm not going through every page of this PowerPoint. We're just doing some highlights. Um, this PowerPoint is what the final report was of the advisory board. The, um, advisory board, uh, the reopening advisory board. It, it's got a ton of great stuff in it. You can see even more data at, uh, mass.gov, uh, forward slash reopening. But this is the, uh, the PowerPoint that we presented, uh, to the governor. And then the governor presented it to everybody on, um, the 18th.
Is that the one, Mayor?
That is the one. And, um, if we, um, yeah, just stay right there for a sec. So I, I just, um, in putting this report together, I want to make sure folks just understand, um, really the comprehensive approach that we took, uh, towards it. And we ended up, and I just, there we go. If you can go to slide three. Great. There we go. Um, so it just, this slide just tells you the full scope of people that we talked with, as well as, um, heard. We got written submissions from association businesses and residents. Um, it was over 45 hours of Zoom meetings, so I'm a little bit blind. But very intense and, um, very rewarding work. And just, just hearing from number one around the Commonwealth was, was really inspiring. And also quite honestly, very scary, uh, uh, the virus that we're facing. That said, if you can go to page seven, please. Okay. So the, we were charged with putting together a report that would look at different industries and when they could open or how they could open safely driven by public health data. The indicators you see before you, the six points, these are the data points that are posted on the state's webpage. And you would see, this is an example. This isn't actually where we stand right now. Um, this is on, on the 18th. The positive test rate, the number of individuals who died from COVID-19, the number of patients with COVID-19 in hospitals, the healthcare readiness, um, our testing capacity and con, contact tracing capabilities. So the Department of DPH, along with the governor's, um, office, as well as, um, the, the advisory board will be watching these, uh, to see where we are as far as, um, driving down or flattening the curve of COVID-19 and then comparing that to, uh, the four phased opening. The important thing is as this, the status changes from positive trend in pos, in progress and negative train, trend, and I think it's one of the biggest, um, strengths of this report is not only does it tell us what we can reopen or how we go forward, it tells us pretty concisely when we stop in place or when we go, um, we go back to another phase or a part of a phase, um, based on the health indicators. While the report is named reopening, um, I would ask you all to take very serious note that it is also about reclosing. We don't want to go back to where we were at the peak of COVID-19 in Massachusetts or in the country. If you could go to slide nine. Okay. Um, so we're talking about, um, our, the, the reopening and there was a stay at home advisory in place and we are shifting to safer at home. You'll see on this, um, uh, slide, a lot of very familiar language around covering your nose and your mouth, washing your hands, keeping distance and being vigilant around high-touch services, surfaces. Very, very important. And I think the message was a little cloudy when the report came out. Covering your nose and your mouth, um, is one part of being safe when you are outside or inside, say, a grocery store. If you're covered up, you should also, and in conjunction with, keep your distance at least six feet. It is not either or. Distance and cover nose and face. On the right side of the slide, you will see a further definition of what safer at home means. There is still a lot of emphasis on staying home as much as you can and going out, um, for very pointed, uh, visits into stores, getting your supplies and going back home again. On the last point, I know it'll be very difficult with the warm weather coming up. Parents should limit playdates for children, um, if, if they can all do that. Can we now, um, go back to slide eight just quickly? So the two things, when we're looking at the reopening report, um, the report is guidance. And there are very few mandatory pieces of this report. You'll see in the left hand, your social guidance around what people must follow to risk new COVID-19 infection or transmission. On the, on the right side is business guidance and these are mandatory workplace standards that all, all workplaces, including city buildings, must follow. And then you're, there's another level of sector-specific protocols and best practices. In the sector-specific protocol sheets, which I'll show you in a little bit, um, these are non-negotiable. They must be followed or a business cannot reopen. And if it's found not to be following the protocols, then they will be closed. All phase one businesses that have opened need to meet this, these business guidelines by, um, May 25th. Uh, if we could go back to, um, I'm sorry, if we could go to slide 12. Okay, so here is the phase reopening plan. So right now, um, or if they, on May 17th, we were stay at home. 18th, it started, it was the first day of phase one. And it's basically things, businesses, industries that were open can resume with severe restrictions, but, uh, less limitations than before May 18th. Then you go into phase two, which is cautious. In phase two, you will notice in the materials across the board, there are not sector-specific protocols yet and they will not be released, um, for at least a couple of more days. And my best guess is May 20, um, I'm sorry, uh, the end of this week, on whatever Friday is, May 22nd. Thank you. Okay. This is phase two does start in June. Phase one started on the 18th. May 25th is the second week of phase one. Then we go into phase two if the health indicators say that it is safe to do so. Phase two, like all the other phases, have to last at least three weeks. Within the three weeks, it can move back into phase one or add additional time onto the phase. Phase three is vigilant. And then phase four is the new normal. And you'll, you'll notice under new normal, um, that starts, that phase starts of vaccines and/or treatments that enable the resumption of new normal. We should not expect to go back, um, to what our lives were like in January. And we should also remember with the development of vaccine, even a bigger, uh, challenge will be supply chain. And how do we get the vaccines around literally the world? Slide 14. Slide 14 lays out, um, again, the four phases, uh, across the top. You'll notice on social guidance, it remains the same. I would strongly encourage folks to get used to that top band about covering your face, washing your hands, socially distant, be vigilant for symptoms and stay home if you feel sick. For, for not only the near and distant future, this will become a part of our society. Then you'll go down and you can see for high-risk populations, what is the guidance for each phase? The gathering size, please note that for phase one, it is less than 10. And phase two, three and four have no numbers attached to it because it will be determined by those six public health, um, indicators. And then travelers, you will see in phase one that, um, we are still urging, urging people who come to Massachusetts to self-care for 14 days. Lodging is still restricted to essential workers only. And now let's see. Slide 18, please. Great. So effective, um, the 18th, um, again, the business actions, specific sector protocols, um, need to be filled, um, by everybody, including hospitals and community health centers. When they do meet those requirements and those requirements will not be, um, approved by the Department of Public Health or the local boards of health. It is a document that they keep on, um, on their premise. And if folks complain or there is a concern, uh, put forward by an employee, it will be investigated and to make sure that they're following protocols. And if other protocols need to be added. As well, regular industry checks in healthcare facilities will stay in place and certainly will review, um, the protocols, uh, for that industry, industry sector. On the 18th, um, it was high priority preventative services, pediatric care, treatment for high-risk patient, patients can resume, um, with the provider, um, uh, testing to the safety standards. This is really, um, while it was in the huge bucket of elective, um, procedures, elective surgeries, we're now going to in-person preventative diagnostic and treatment services. Also, there will, on the 25th, other healthcare providers, other than those in a hospital, community health center, can resume those activities. And now slide 19. Great. So these are the mandatory self certifications for businesses, what they look like, the plan template, then the compliance poster, and then other posters for employers and workers. These are all on the website and they will be adding different building sectors as we go through the phases of reopening. And you'll see these in City Hall and you'll see these in hospitals. They must be posted for the public to see. They are also translated into other languages. And again, those are on the website, mass.gov/reopening. Another industry, I'm sorry, another agency that will be overseeing compliance will be the Department of Labor Standards, which does a lot of this work and works very closely with OSHA. Slide 20. Childcare was really the biggest challenge that we faced as an advisory board. I will say if it did nothing else, it really highlighted the huge gaps we had already in our childcare system. And facing this pandemic, it was woefully apparent. On the, in Phase One, the emergency childcare system that was set up, it's about 350 providers that are currently operating during, before Phase One, they were operating at about 17% capacity. And they are, will now take children of non-essential workers or what was categorized as non-essential workers. They have a capacity to take other, up to 10,000 children across the state. You'll see what on the left, the emergency childcare centers are doing to provide a safe environment for infants to elementary children. I would say that the childcare workers that are working in those centers are most definitely first responders to the needs of our babies, our toddlers and our kids. If, you know, anyone who's been around children or seen children on TV, you know, developmentally, just hugs and giggles and high fives and all of that is a big part of being in a group. It's how we learn how to socialize. These childcare centers are trying to figure out how to provide that to these children and structure, given very, very severe, very, very severe restrictions. Going forward, there will be an additional report on how to increase the safety in emergency childcare and also in other childcare settings that aren't yet open. They will also, there will be a further reporting out around recreational summer camps. Myself and several other electeds have reached out to the Department of Early Education and Care as well as DPH to prioritize childcare during a pandemic, but also look at the risks associated with these childcare centers and really a society not supporting them to, to face that first during the pandemic. And I, I hope we see some progress. Very, very troubling. Slide 22. So most of slide 22, to no surprises about Boston, the top row is a bus, about buses, and it just walks us through how our bus service will look like. This is true for all the regional transit authorities. There is an additional report coming out around transportation that will augment this, but also take a look at how Phase One was working, which is still the adapted Saturday schedule with a lot of cleaning and sanitizing and see what the effect is. What will help us determine the effect are certainly those public health metrics, but most importantly, contact, contact tracing. And we're, we're really building out that system across the state. Page, I'm sorry, slide 23. Great. Okay, so this is about supplies. There's been a lot of gouging and horrible stories about people buying stuff online, never getting it or getting sub-quality supplies. The administration launched a supply kind of portal for educational materials for employers, but also guidance on how to purchase these protective supplies, what, what PPEs are needed in each setting. There is some really interesting material in there about gloves and when to use them and when not to them. And that glove sometimes can, can actually further spread a virus rather than prevent it. And that washing your hands with warm water and soap is really the best way to, to deal with the virus on your hands. A great example we heard about during the testimony was in a cafeteria making kids food. There were a series of egg timers throughout the kitchen area and every 15 minutes, the egg timers would all go off and everyone had to stop what they were doing and go wash their hands with some water. So that, you might want to do that around your house, right, your work setting when you go back. There is a priority on this portal for Massachusetts-based businesses. You'll see in the lower right-hand corner, the Massachusetts manufacturing options here and for over 430, a lot of these businesses pivoted to making PPEs from their normal products. Okay, so that is it. And now can we go to the Board of Health one pager?
What was that called? What's the title of that one?
Reopening Massachusetts.
The Task Force one or the Fact Sheet?
Oh, the Fact Sheet is...
I think you wanted the Fact Sheet, right?
Yeah, I have it here. East Hampton Business, yeah, reopening fact sheet. So President Coniff asked me to put together a... Nope, not that one.
Not that one?
Nope.
Okay. I'll find it.
Reopening Fact Sheet. It's a PDF from the Board of Health.
I'll find it. Okay. Is it about face coverings? Because I'm not, maybe I don't have the document available.
If I text it to you real fast, can you put it up?
I'll keep looking for, I think it's in my email. If you want to start, well, let me look real quick. Sorry, folks.
Can we go back to it later?
The greatest, yeah, the greatest plan awarded. Let me just look real quick there.
Yeah, no.
Sorry to those who are eagerly anticipating this.
It's a great document.
It's totally worth waiting for.
I would say so.
While we eagerly anticipate, may I say that Councilor Coniff, I think you've done a great job at all the technology. Congratulations. This happens here, no big deal.
I have the email you sent me, Mayor. I'm just trying to see if that document...
It's in the second email.
I have it. I don't know if you want me to try to share my desktop or something?
Is it East Hampton reopening? All I have is, I think, the Task Force, but...
Yeah, it was the second email. Owen, you have the East Hampton Businesses COVID-19 requirements?
Yeah, it was sent, I don't know if this will help Peg. It was sent May 18th at 5:59 PM, I believe.
Okay.
If we make Owen a co-host, he can do it, Peg.
Hang on, guys. This is not that tricky. It shouldn't be that tricky. Let me put it that way. All right.
Not convincing.
I know. Owen, I'm going to make you a, you should be able to share anyway, but I'll make you a co-host and then you should be able to share.
All right, let me figure out how to do this. Hold on one sec. Sorry.
Bottom of the screen, share, screen. As long as it's up in your computer, it'll find it and you can click on it and open it, you know?
Yeah, I just have to un-split screen myself here.
Right.
And then...
So talk amongst yourselves, everyone.
Uh, hold on.
I can't believe I don't have it. I opened everyone you gave me.
That's not it.
That's not it?
No, that's the one that Peg had.
Okay, hold on. I don't think I... Host disabled attendee screen share. Peg, let me just forward this over to you really quick?
Sure.
Okay.
Can we go on to a report and come back to the mayor maybe or you want to wait?
Two seconds. Peg, I'm sending it over right now to your, oh, it's your M. Coniff, I'm sorry.
It's, you know, this is, we'll just, it's, this is what happens when you have remote meetings.
Coming over hot.
Can you take down this one, Owen?
Oh, I don't think that's me. Is it?
No.
Oh, okay.
I've taken it down.
You see it, President?
Okay. This has been very exciting for everyone I know. Okay.
Yay!
I hope this is one, Mayor.
Well, yeah, here we go. Okay, so President Coniff asked me to put together a one pager of just what had come out on May 18th. And I didn't have to do that because our amazing health agent, Bree, did it for us all. So thank you very much, Bree. She's, she's amazing. That can be another report. So what, just quickly, what this, what this, actually, one and a half pager does is it walks you through with links, everything you need to know about what happened on May 18th as well. So, you know, and one, the, our local orders stay in effect. So the state, if you could picture an umbrella, there's the CDC and then there's state DPH. And then you go down to the local Board of Health and the local Board of Health really fine tunes those top line guidelines to what works for East Hampton. And, and so all of the orders that we have been issuing, both the mayor's office and the local Board of Health remain in effect. And in addition, the governor has mandatory workplace safety standards, which were reviewed by and our amazing Chair of the Board of Health, Maggie Hebert, and we're going to go with those. They were fantastic. If there are two similar standards that you're seeing on the state level and a local level, the stricter of the two must be implemented. So you'll also, just number two goes through again about the strictest standard. And at the, in the bottom of number two, the sector specific protocol site. So that's going to be repeatedly updated. So if you clicked on it now, it may not have a sector specific protocol site for the industry that you're looking for or waiting for. And they're, they're updating those and adding those literally daily. If you want to know what phase your business is in or recreation, there's the tentative phase schedule that will also be updated through this process, depending on those critical public health metrics. It'll, and also in four, important, that if you've remained closed, you have to complete the following prior to opening. Again, as I mentioned, the signed copies do not have to be sent to the Health Department. Or you do not have to update when you've done this. However, if the Health Department, Mass Department of Labor Standards or the Mass Department of Public Health receive a complaint and conduct and come to do it an inspection, the business must produce the documents. And then the last three bullets under that give the, those are the forms that businesses, city buildings need to fill out as well as put up both employer and worker posters. And they walk you through what needs to go where. The compliance attestation poster needs to be printed, signed and posted in an area within the business premises that is visible to workers and visitors. Then number five is a real, is a great little link. It's that supply vendor portal I mentioned, but also lets you know what PPEs are appropriate in different settings and in the role you're playing at any given time in society. So then, from there, I just have a couple of comments to just stress. One, where the state is giving guidance, the local orders will stand. And where the state mandates, local orders can clarify the mandate but cannot overrule it. So with the workforce mandate, safety protection mandate, we can clarify it to a particular business in East Hampton that seems to fit like in between a bunch of them, but we cannot say the mandate is not applicable. Again, May 25th, just to, May 18th was the first day of the first week of Phase One. May 25th is the second week of Phase One. June 1st is the third week of Phase Two. So in the second week of Phase One, there are more businesses that will be allowed to open hair salon, pet groomers and car washes. So there will be some businesses in the middle of a phase that may open, remembering that tomorrow, if those indicators all turn to red or an important one does, that, that date of May 25th, the first day of the second, second week of the phase, they might push off hair salons. And they've done that already in Connecticut. And Maine also has rolled back their phased plan because of spikes of infection. So I just remind people yet again, it's a reopening plan that very easily recloses based on public health. And that's one of the strongest, I think, elements of the plan is the fluidity. We can really react quite quickly within this plan to stop in place or to go back or to continue forward with the plan. And any given industry sector or public activity can be pushed off to a later phase if new health developments come forward. Around our public buildings, there's been a lot of confusion on this. The public, our public buildings throughout the city will remain closed to the public through June 30th at least. Every single building in the city, public building in the city must fill out the self attestation forms and posters for each building by department. So departments that share a building, like many do in 50-Pace and 32-Pace, and there will have to be an attestation for each, for each department because as you go in, there might be different protocols of how you access. That is for the employees. That is for contractors that might come in to do necessary work. And eventually, it will be for members of the public who come in. Employees that do come in, we're looking at starting to bring in more employees to get work done, especially with the end of the fiscal year. It's very important to note that anyone who can work remotely for all or part of their job is strongly, strongly encouraged to do so. We still have high... We still have high risk of transmission and infection. I'll remind you that the air circulation system in 50-Pason is antiquated to say the least. So the fewer people in that building while we get through the next couple of weeks and through June 30th are very important. We don't want to stress out that system any more than we have to. Employees will need to wear masks in the building and they will need to keep the masks on when they're at their work area. And social distancing will also have to be measured out. The public buildings, all, the other thing that will need to be set up for public employees are required trainings, very similar to the conflict of interest trainings that we all have to take. And, and we have until July 1st to get all of our employees to do that. And I would, I would suspect when we are able to have meetings in the building, again, council, school committee will also, as city employees, take that. So if you've taken the conflict of interest test or have to do that, then you'll, you'll need to do this as well, the safety training about proper procedures. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor, that was a lot of great, great information. Thank you so much. Does anyone of the council have any questions, Councilors Eric?
Sorry, just trying to toggle between notes and stuff like that. Peg, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for all this work and this, you had a really great explanation. Where are my notes? The Safer at Home initiative, is that kind of open-ended for now pending, you know, more information and metrics as we proceed along?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the Safer at Home is gonna develop into a best practice of how folks interact with society and the community. There was a concern and a couple of legal challenge to a stay-at-home order in different parts of the country, I don't think it came up in Massachusetts. And this revised language came from the CDC. It's really, you know, in practice and best practice of Safer at Home, it's the same as, as stay-at-home. But, but giving guidance, and I don't see that going away in Phase 2, 3, or 4, the new normal. I think that will, will evolve. And, and actually, I actually have more things, Peg, President Amconaf, three things. But this is a good break to take questions on what I just presented.
You mean all those, all those documents I just closed? Because you're not gonna want to go through them, I have to reopen now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Asked a lot of questions, guys, this may take me a minute.
I have two more questions, do you want me to wait, President?
Yes, please, Councilor Derby had a question.
Thank you, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to, you know, say thanks for all your work in this, in this unprecedented time. And, and thanks for being responsive to questions and emails. And I know that last Saturday, there was a big, and I know a couple of the councilors helped out, a big mask giveaway. As part of your presentation, one of the things you said was that a lot of these things are guidelines that are not mandatory. And I just want to get a little clarification, face coverings in public, is that still considered mandatory?
That is a, um... So our local order is, is stronger than the state order. But even the state order says it's that you need to wear them as well as staying six feet apart in settings that you are very likely to be near someone. So anything from the, from Big E's to the bike path, and you can be fined for that. And it's, so the trick is with a mandatory, the enforcement is tied to the Board of Health and health agents. So it's not an ordinance, right, that, that we've passed or you've, you guys have passed. And the enforcement's through the Board of Health and the health agents and all of our police officer, our health agents. And we, we have a sergeant, oh my gosh, I can see, the name will come back to me. Graby is, is actually the direct liaison, is coordinating the public activities. And education is first, you know, we're not looking to, to go out there and ticket everybody, but, but doing a lot of education. But the, yeah, I mean, no sure, no, no shoes, no, no shirt, no face covering, no service.
Right. And I just, so, and that was, you know, one of the things, I think the education piece is gonna be really important, because if you drive through town, you're gonna, you're gonna see, more than half of the people do not have face coverings available. And you can't always socially distance even when you're outside. You know, if you have to step off the sidewalk into traffic, that's not really an acceptable solution. So I think we need to really push that educational piece just from anecdotally, like walking through town and seeing what's happening in East Hampton right now. So thank you, though.
Yeah, welcome.
Councilor Rostro?
Thank you so much for that presentation, Mayor. That was, it really feels good to know that there's a plan in our state and local levels. I was wondering about the gathering, so it's 10 and under. I'm just saying with summer coming and people, like my neighbors behind me had well over, at least 20 people there the other day.
Yeah.
What, like how, which like, I shouldn't, our neighbors are gonna be calling the police on each other, like what is the response to something like that?
You could certainly let the police know, you could get ahold of the health agent to, to report that and have concerns. I know it's very uncomfortable, you know, to go to your neighbors and say, hey! But, yeah, I mean, we, and we've had to do that. I mean, we see people on, around town or, you know, at, at the boardwalk, you know, or non-offtake park, and, and have had to remind them friendly, like, it, it, you know, six feet apart and a group of 20 is not okay. Yeah, it doesn't work that way. So certainly call in to police or a health agent if, if it's during business hours. I would just stress, as Councilor Derby stressed, it's, it's a lot of education right now. And making sure people understand that. And, and, yeah. I mean, it...
Yeah, I would also say that, you know, for anyone who does have situations where clearly people are flaunting their lack of compliance. We've heard so many horrible stories throughout the country of people just, as the chief would call them, bad actors, who feel that this is not something they need to comply with. So I would encourage people who come upon those situations to rely on public safety to have those conversations with, with individuals. Because I, I worry that people are not thinking clearly and they may react badly. And we should not put ourselves into situations like that. We should rely on public safety to have those hard conversations with people who are really not playing with us at this point. Any other questions? I know, Owen, you have another question, I just want to see if anybody else has any other questions. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Eric.
Oh, I'm already unmuted, thank you. This is semi-rhetorical, but kind of clarifying as well, Mayor. I think especially, as it pertains to, I mean, as it pertains to a lot of things in this plan, but, you know, one thing that I kind of saw really quickly abroad and in the community is, is about summer camps. And people saw that, oh wow, well, day camps are gonna be open. And, you know, it's more like, that's the plan and they could be open within a month, but that's a very big if. And there's a lot of kind of metrics that they need to meet. As well as, you know, even if they do open, it's not gonna be business as usual. And I think it's important that the public understands that, that this isn't a guarantee that we're gonna see camps open in the summer, right? And certainly not in this city either, anyway, but in general, across the state.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, they're not. So that's a great example of, you know, the, the, there is actually a recreation and outdoor additional information coming. There's another work group just working on that. So that's a great example of the state collecting more information around camps and outdoor activities, sport leagues and whatnot, where the local municipality, East Hampton, the mayor, myself, proactively closed the camps, kept the parks closed except for walking and passive recreation, as well as the pool. And I'll, I'll tell you, you know, that was a roll of the dice. I mean, I know it was the right thing to do and I don't regret making the decision. But unfortunately, that decision was affirmed during my time on the advisory board when very prominent clinicians and leaders of public health in our state said that they, they just don't know how COVID-19 affects children, how it's transmitted, the inflammatory disease, what happens with water. Not a huge probably issue with pools per se, but kids flop around in water, right? And they get out of pools and, I, you know, I am so fine to overreact during this. And closing camps and pools, I have no problem with. And talking to, you know, somebody on the bike path, and I, I've done it, saying, please, put, put masks on, if nothing else for your children. Yeah, this doesn't, this doesn't end until we have a vaccine. And I think that's only the beginning of it, right? Because not everyone will get the vaccine. And I was, I was chastised on, on the bike path when I was talking to a family about wearing masks and, or face coverings and, and what kind of cool coverings you could use. And a six-year-old constituent told me point-blank that I wasn't a good mayor because I canceled, I canceled some. And I could not disagree, I canceled some. And I will continue to cancel things to keep everybody safe. But, yeah, no, that's, summer camps, I don't, I don't know how they, yeah, I don't see how they open. I will go on the record right now and say, I hope they don't. Which I know is a huge, I mean, the worst part of this, doing this work, was childcare. It's, it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking. And those workers are amazing. The dedication to, you know, I mean, just amazing, to give comfort to parents who have no, you know, who need to, to go to work and, and protect us all.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions of the mayor before we get to the final three points that you wanted to make? And hopefully I have the right documents up and ready?
Hopefully.
Okay, I'm ready to screen share, hopefully.
Drumroll.
What, what document would you like? Fingers crossed.
The reimbursement one? Any one. It's not, it doesn't have to be in an order, I can, I can wing it.
I have it, I know I have it, there we go.
All right, oh wow, great, okay. So in response to COVID-19, the work of the advisory board, I created three different work groups to look at, to basically look at how we all can do best by East Hampton. The first one is an internal work group that's going to be looking at reimbursements of federal and state dollars, as well as additional grant money that we can seek. It's really confusing. Chief Mutter and Deputy Chief Heniman really are experts on the FEMA submissions and getting that money into the portal and have dealt with that in past disasters. There is no department right now in our city that is not impacted by COVID-19 and may have eligible expenses. So I've asked our Treasurer, Jen Gallin, to step forward and lead a small working group to make sure that paperwork and processes and also doing research on where, not only where we get reimbursement, but in what order. So for instance, for our FEMA reimbursement, we get 75% of qualified reimbursable expenses. We just found out that the CARE Act money that we get or will get can be our 25% local match. So kind of navigating that all and putting it all on literally one person with the help of another person in our city is just really overwhelming and doesn't serve any of us well. So this work group will support Deputy Chief Heniman in, in submissions as, as, as we go through this process, which will be very long. Could we go to the reopening? Okay? Okay. Next part is a reopening committee that I, without shame, grabbed the title from the reopening committee I was on. This is a task force, it's local community members. And we're, they're tasked with, with two main things. One, to create a survey that can be used across our community, business, and consumers, just asking anonymously how they're feeling, you know, public, you know, what, what the level of trust and confidence is in the public in interacting with our business sector. How do our businesses feel about interacting with the public? What do they need? What's not working, what support they may need? Part two, after the survey, is a distribution method. And, and we'll really be asking everyone to help us get it distributed. We want to make sure that everybody, you know, can, can have an opportunity. And that's, just putting it on Facebook or on the websites, not gonna be enough. And I'm prepared certainly to print surveys out. And I think everybody on this call knows how I feel about paper, because we need that input. Also, key with the survey that is developed will, that the survey will be given or distributed more than once. We're thinking about like a two, two-week, or three-week, or a month. So we can compare apples to apples where we are with confidence, where we are with community need, and also business need to make, you know, to make it out of this as strong as we possibly can. Bozina Dabic from East Hampton Savings Bank and Emily Russo, who is our Assistant Personnel Director, have agreed to co-chair this committee. And also on the, the committee members include Laura Douglas, who works at Bay State, also co-owns Galaxy, Jason Miranda, who is self-employed and East Hampton resident, Simon Artartis, and Owen, you could maybe say that last name better than I can. He's the Chief Medical Officer at Hoyok Medical Center. And Chris Millett, Carl Woodruff, and Noah Modi from Oxbow Build Design located in the Keystone Building. So as you can see, it's a very tight group. But the idea is that they will create a distribution center, a system, surveys out to all parts of the community, as well as the survey itself. So our first meeting, the co-chairs and I meet Friday. And the timeline is four to six weeks to get something out that really makes sense. I don't want to rush this because there are so many moving parts it needs. So we want to make sure we get the right questions and we'll be relying on surveys that other chamber of commerces and cities have used. Last one, please. Blueprint East Hampton, this is a grant and concept that I introduced publicly some time ago. And we've been making slow progress on that. This is a great opportunity for us to really ramp it up. Kind of, you know, you think about the reimbursement is, the reimbursement work group is about right now what we're going for, going through. The reopening is about what we need to stand stronger together through this. And then Blueprint East Hampton is really a roadmap to go forward. And we're using the city initiative ecosystem money from the National League of Cities. Local entrepreneur and co-owner of Corcello Batiria, Casey Corcello, has stepped up and she will coordinate this project from the city side. And we're working with Sourcelink, Resource Map. And we're working with Sourcelink Resource Mapping out of Kansas City. And they are also a part of the University of Kansas to put together a dynamic resource map for businesses, regardless of where they are or where they want to go and how we can connect. Our partners with this will include people from regional planning, commissions, but also business schools in the area and really driven by hard data of what has worked in East Hampton and make a really creative and formal network of innovation and small businesses more formal. So anyone who has an idea of to expand a business or to go in a new direction or has an idea, they know where to start and where to go and that we will support them. So this was the first page. We are, I mean, the first part of this. And then this is a part, this is the project, if you remember, maybe two, no, four months ago, will morph into this public dashboard. So this is the first piece. And now I'm really done. Thank you for giving me so much time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the information. And I know, or I hope, that I didn't put a lot of additional work on your plate when I asked you to.
No. Nope.
But I thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
I think Lindsay is just applauding.
I don't know if she's glad it's over or if she liked what you were saying.
A little bit of both, right? I'm glad it's over. That was a lot.
No, I mean, it was, it's a little bit of information overload, but I know it's there so I can go back and dig in. But, you know, I'm just, sorry. A little personal note, my brother lives in a country right now where there's no plan and he has COVID, as does his wife. And there's no plan in that country, Nicaragua. And so it's very nice to live in a state and a local community that has a strong plan. It definitely makes you feel more secure. And I really feel like community members are looking out and taking care of each other. So it just feels that, it felt really good to hear your whole presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Rist?
Great team.
Just one question, Mayor. As you've been dealing with this at the state level, I'm concerned about how, we're doing very well, but from South Chapel up here and they haven't been concerned about social distancing and doing everything they should be doing. How do we make them self-quarantine? I saw that in something. How do we deal with that? I just don't see how we can people from coming into the state. I mean, it's hard.
You are supposed to, when you come into Massachusetts, you are still strongly encouraged to quarantine for 14 days. But for any uniformity across the country, it needs to come from the federal government. And if there's no other time in our history, I think we are living up to our name of the United States of America and a state-based participatory democracy. It's really scary. And I'll tell you, this reopening plan, while it's solid, is scary. Like, there is no decision that we made, and there's really no decision that you will make leaving your house without a face covering that you will know for sure doesn't relieve, doesn't result in somebody dying. I mean, that's just where we are. And that's not going to change for a long time. It's just, it's just not.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If none, then we will move in. Thank you, Mayor, very much. Then we will move into reports of standing committees. Council Rist, Finance.
Thank you. We will have one more budget hearing tomorrow night at 5:30. That budget hearing will deal with revenue, general government, and the CPA. We will not vote on all of the budget sections. We will have a meeting on the 27th where all of the budget sections will be voted on by the Finance Committee. On the 27th, we will also have a discussion, I mean, a discussion and vote on the two fire contract appropriations that are on us tonight. And I would like to, at this time, set a motion for a public hearing to be held on June 3rd for the full budget of the City Council. I mean, the full budget of the city as presented by the mayor.
We have a motion, second, to set a public hearing for the 2021 fiscal year budget for the City of East Hampton for June 3rd. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Nick Coniff? Hi. Dalemb Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Montek?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerrit.
You can't find the mute button.
Hi.
It hasn't moved. It's in the same place on the screen that it was.
It wasn't working, sorry.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Continuing, Madam President. I would like to, at this time, do a first reading of new business. We have the force of appropriation request. The amount is $38,211.22 to come from the Reserve Fund, $38,211.22, to be sent to the Fire Department firefighter payroll account, and to the EMT incentive account, $11,381.71, for a total of $38,211.22 for the following purpose, to provide funds for the rest of the fiscal year 2020 for firefighters' contract salaries due to budget shortfall. The second supplemental appropriation is requested is $122,541.62 to be transferred from free cash, $100,000, and from stabilization, $22,541.62, for a total of $122,541.62 to be transferred to fire payroll department account and EMT incentive account, $122,541.62. The amount requested for the following purpose, to fund the firefighter's contract for the fiscal year 2021 as listed in the attached costing spreadsheet. I move that both of these items be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move supplemental appropriation request, $122,541.62 for fiscal '21 and interdepartmental transfer of $38,211.22 for the remainder of the 2020 fiscal year. Any further discussion? And I want to, if the mayor is still on, she looks like she stepped away. But I was going to ask the mayor if she had anything she wanted to say about this since she introduced it. She is not here. So we will, we will just open any discussion around the motion to move it to Finance. Seeing none? Barbara?
Nick Coniff? Hi. Dalemb Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Montek?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerrit?
Hi.
Madam President, I also move.
I'm sorry. Motion passes unanimously. That was now part of the Finance Committee.
I also move that the two aforementioned items be set for public hearing on June 3rd. These items must be set, and I hope, prior to the budget hearing because they impact the fiscal '21 budget. So I'd like them to be presented on that evening. So I move that the public hearing be set on June 3rd. I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to set a public hearing on the aforementioned appropriations for the fire salaries to June 3rd. Any discussion? Barbara?
Nick Coniff? Hi. Dalemb Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Montek?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerrit?
Hi.
Motion passes.
That, just to remind everybody, I hope other councils can attend on the 27th at 5:30 for the Finance Committee meeting to discuss this item along with the final budget votes. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes.
Thank you, Council Rist. Public safety, Council Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start making a motion requesting 90-day extension for the pedestrian safety review.
Second.
I'm sorry. What was the extension for?
Pedestrian. 90.
Okay. 90-day extension. And we, did we get a second on that?
I did.
Motion and a second to extend pedestrian safety review by 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara?
Nick Coniff?
Yes.
Dalemb Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Montek?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerrit?
Hi.
Motion passes. Council Gomez?
Yes, we met twice this month because we have in front of us one new ordinance. And basically, the two meeting was to discuss that ordinance. The first one, where we met, some of the councils have some question with the language. We reviewed the language. We make a few changes in the language. Then we met again and we vote three to zero to pass this ordinance to the full City Council. I'm not going to set yet a public hearing because I know June 3rd is going to be really busy with the budget. Probably we won't have another meeting in June. If that happened, I want to, I'm going to wait until June 3rd to make the motion for the next meeting. If not, so it's going to be July 1st. Just to tell what happened with the ordinance, I asked to Madam President to see if we can send the ordinance to the city solicitor to review it. And I'm pretty sure she did. That was a few days ago. So we have to wait until the city solicitor answer and review it. Later today, I'm going to send the latest language to everybody so that way everybody have the language, including you, Barbara.
Thank you. I was going to ask for that.
Yes. So that way everybody can have it. Besides that, we, at the committee, we vote to remove one of the things that we have in our agenda. We vote three to zero to remove without prejudice that we examine Main and South Street intersection. And I have to make a motion to remove it here too, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I'm going to make a motion, I'm making a motion to remove without prejudice that we examine Main and South Street intersection.
Okay.
Motion and second to remove without prejudice the Main and South Street intersection item on the public safety agenda. Any discussion? Barbara?
Nick Coniff?
Hi.
Dalemb Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Montek?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zerrit?
Bye.
Motion passes.
The other thing that we have in our agenda was the residents' speeding concern. And I have to be honest, I totally forget about after the crisis and everything, what I was going to suppose to do. But thanks to our clerk, Rothschild, we're going to be on track. I have a meeting tomorrow with Madam President Coniff to discuss about the traffic calming committee and how we can resolve it. Besides that, we schedule a meeting for June 2nd at 6:00 PM. And that concludes.
Thank you, Council Gomez. Council Lynch, appointments?
Thank you, Madam President. We have five mayoral appointments for your consideration. And I'm going to go through a quick summary of the individuals and what they're going for. And then I'll make the motion as a whole, if everybody's okay with that. So we have Jamie Pauquette looking to go to the Energy Advisory Committee for the term expiration 12/31/2022. Jamie wants to be on the committee. Spoke to Marian Goldstein, who's also on the School Board Committee and the Energy Advisory Committee. She's been here since 2012, two sons. And the last 18 years has worked in the environmental field, looking at different options to better the environment. Moving on to Brad Riley for the Affordable and Fair Housing with a term expiration 12/31/2020. Brad has dedicated his life to a wide variety of different affordable and fair housing partnerships in some needed areas, from social services to domestic survivors, LGBTQ communities, families in need, as well as youth, just to name some of them, both in paid and volunteering levels. Brad has assisted in multiple, oh, I'm sorry. Has also lived in East Hampton for eight years and is willing to serve the community in any capacity and was excited to be nominated by the mayor for this one. Glenn Shallen for the East Hampton City Arts, term expiration 12/31/2020. Glenn is new to the city and wants to dive in and get involved. Been to a few meetings already and is, was going back before the pandemic happened. Loves the vision of the committee and wants to take it to a reality. Moved his stained glass business to East Hampton last year and really dove in to the arts community. Also wanted to note that Glenn was up in the Berkshires and serving in the Berkshire County for the last 19 years, was included in their cultural council and was also a part of the operating the organization committee for a monthly Lennox contra-style dance, which was interesting. And moving on to Tracy Eller for East Hampton City Arts, term expiration 12/31/2021. So serving as public art, it is, this would be an extension. So already serving on a public arts committee. This would be an extension and it makes sense for her to be involved with both. Has already also attended meetings prior to the pandemic. Tracy is a photographer who also works in town, has also received grants from the Mass Cultural Council. So has benefited from some of the council's works and some different councils in town and has also worked with Mass Live and was the artist in residence of one of their performances, which was a kind of neat to note. And then moving on to John Casey Douglas for ECA Grants Committee, term expiration 4/30/2023. Casey owns the Galaxy Restaurant and has been in the arts community for years. He's also on the EDIC as well and has applied to be on the East Hampton City Arts Committee as well. So very involved, very big in the art community and loves working with the other artists within town and supporting them any way he can. All of these appointments did pass in committee, three to zero across the board. So if there's no questions at this point, I will make a motion.
I apologize. Council Lynch, Barbara LaBombarde has a question.
Sure.
I, it was my understanding that Glenn had withdrawn. But, I mean, that was at the last meeting.
So Jonathan Carroll was the one we had no information on.
Mayor?
I thought that was.
I had Glenn crossed off. I thought he had withdrawn.
He did.
Okay.
Was it Glenn or John? Because Omar talked to him.
Glenn Shallen.
Omar? Omar?
Did we lose Omar?
I guess. He's not even on the.
They have dropped off momentarily.
Oh.
He's not even on the list, so we may have to ask him back in.
Yeah, I'm not sure where Omar. Omar spoke to him.
Madam President, if the mayor says that someone has withdrawn, we just simply don't appoint that person.
Yeah, I definitely think we should take them off of the motion for tonight and get it kind of squared away.
Yeah, because that's fine. And I know Omar spoke to Glenn, so. Well, I'll do the other four and we'll keep it on our agenda and address it next time.
Perfect.
So I will make a motion to approve the following appointments. Jamie Pauquette to. Jamie Pauquette to the Energy Advisory Committee, term expiration 12/31/2022. Brad Riley to the Affordable and Fair Housing Committee, 12/31/2020 expiration. Tracy Eller to the East Hampton City Arts, term expiration 12/31/2021. And John Casey Douglas, ECA Grants Committee, term expiration 4/30/2023.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve four appointments as delineated by councillor Lynch. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Meg Coniff? Aye. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez? Oh, he's not here, sorry. JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
You're already off mute.
I'm already unmuted. Aye.
Motion passes 8 to 0. Anything else, councillor Lynch?
Yep, I have some new business. I'd like to make a motion to move the mayoral reappointment of Kelly Ritchie to the Licensing Board, term expiration 6/1/2026.
Second.
Motion and a second to move Kelly Ritchie appointment to the appointment sub, the Appointment Committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Meg Coniff? Aye. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar, he's still not here. JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
The ayes have it, 8 to 0. Motion passes.
And then, thank you. And the last thing is our next meeting will be June 3rd at 5:30 PM via Zoom.
Okay, now, so I just want to point out, councillor Lynch, we start this at 5:45. Will you be able to get through your appointment in 15 minutes, do you think?
We'll do it at 5:00, just to be safe.
Okay.
As long as JP and Omar are fine with it, which we were-
Okay. Just because of technology, we start to bump into each other on these things.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
This concludes.
Thank you very much, councillor Lynch. Councillor Derby, ordinance?
Thank you, Madam President. So I'll take your housekeeping first. In the form of a motion, I'd like to request a 90-day extension to the two items on our agenda. One is proposed ordinance reduction and elimination of plastics, and the other is continued review, review of adult cannabis establishments. 90 days, please.
Second.
Motion and a second to extend reduction, elimination of plastics and adult-use cannabis establishment topics, 90 days. Any discussion? Barbara? Roll call.
Meg Coniff? Aye. Salem Derby?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And, and so the Planning Board had their first virtual meeting last night, and so we are in the, in the beginnings of scheduling a joint public hearing with the Planning Board. We don't currently have a meeting scheduled at this moment. I think I'm going to confer with my fellow councillors and see if maybe we can, in between some of the finance and budget Terry stuff, maybe we can meet in the next week or so. And when that is, is done, we'll put that out, we'll post that. But that concludes my report for now.
Great, thank you councillor Derby. Do you have another meeting scheduled?
Not as of now.
Okay. Thank you. Property, councillor Zerrit?
Thank you, President Coniff. I don't have much to report. I did reach out to John Mason from the Parks just to obtain some clarity about when they might meet, just in regards to providing you all with an update about evaluation and potentially a vote on that parcel off of Williston Avenue, but they don't have anything set up yet. And I'm still working through, kind of familiarizing myself with Axis GIS to try to establish some informatics for the rest of the councillors on the committee regarding the inventory for city-owned property, so trying to put that together. And with everything that's happening in terms of the technological challenges here, I'm thinking that probably after our hearings for the budget, I'll, I'll call a meeting. So I will, again, reach out soon, but I wanted to kind of create some ease of use for the other councillors on the committee in order to get through this city-owned property agenda item. So that concludes.
Great, thank you councillor Zerrit. Rules and Government Relations, councillor Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. We haven't met since the last time the city council held a meeting. There was, we spoke last week about meeting next week on the 28th. I don't know, I never scheduled that though, but if that's okay with the, the rest of the committee and with the mayor, I, I could just announce that right now.
And that's primarily, we're going to talk about, is it primarily to talk about charter?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's fine by me, councillor Peak.
Okay.
Is the mayor able to attend?
What?
I said we second about this.
On May 28th, we are setting a government, Rules and Government Relations to continue the discussion on charter. We'd like to have you present?
Yes.
Great. Well, then, yes, we'll be meeting on May 28th to, to discuss that, so I would just encourage everybody to attend if you can. Interesting.
What, what time?
Let's call it 6:00.
Okay. Are you only going to talk about charter?
That, I imagine, will probably, actually, let's call it 5:30 because that could take a little while. And yeah, I think that that will, that'll probably take the whole meeting, so, yeah.
And just for clarity, Barbara, there's two items on the Government Relations. There's one for a committee discussion and then the draft document, both of those will be part of it. Okay.
Right. And, right, everything else is sort of just pending, so I suppose that concludes.
Councillor Peak?
Thank you.
Do you need an extension on the Rule 11L discussion?
You don't even need me, do you?
I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
Well, you know, really, we're just, I, I think we're just waiting to approve a set of minutes so that we have the nailed-down language and I'll send it to Barb, but depending, I mean, I guess, let's give it a 30-day anyway, just because if, if, you know what, like, yeah, I'd like to extend it 30 days just so that we don't necessarily have to have that discussion at the end of a lengthy budget hearing. So I'll move to extend that by the rule, New Council Rule 11L filing of committee minutes. I'd ask for a 30-day extension on that.
Second.
Motion second to extend by 30 days, did you say?
Yeah.
Okay, 30 days, New Council Rule 11L. Any discussion? Barbara?
Meg Coniff? Aye. Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerrit?
Aye.
Ayes have it, 9 to 0. Motion passes.
All right, that concludes.
Thank you councillor Peak. Councillor Peak, did you have anything around rank choice voting?
Only that I need to chat with the chair and with Barb and figure out what our meeting schedule is going to look like going forward. I noticed that there's not currently a meeting on the city meeting calendar for this month, so I just need to figure out what's going on there. Just so you know, Dan Gilbert is the, the chair of that. I'm happy to report out as a councillor that's on that committee, but, but, you know, I just need to check in and see what is, what's the situation with scheduling, but I have nothing-
Yeah, we, we did have a meeting scheduled for next, the 27th, but I'm not sure if that's still on or not. That, that was scheduled, our last meeting.
Right, and, and sort of the, the big question that I had regarding all of that, which I just frankly have not gotten around to having yet, is, is just about whether, as a special committee of the council, we should be, but, but a committee that also does feature, like, include several members of the public, whether we should be complying with the mayor's request to not hold committee meetings for the time being, or whether that's a committee that should keep going.
I thought that was only through the 18th.
Right, so the guidance that we've given is through the 18th, which has passed. What we are, what I think, Jeff, I was going to say councillor bag, but no, he's a planner. Planner Bag and I were thinking of doing is writing up a new guidance for how to move forward and to schedule your meetings. So working with the mayor, if, if she's okay with that, we'll ask for her approval on that guidance and then we'll get it out to all the chairs.
Councillor Rist has his hand up.
There is something on the website about remote guidance committees.
Say more, Barb, I'm not understanding what you mean.
On our, on our city website, under News and Updates, there's information on remote guidance for committees.
Correct, I don't know if that's since, is that for the after, after May 18th, what you do?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. No, that's fine. We'll, we'll go for it. We'll just review, but yeah, we'll, we'll, councillor Peak, we'll make sure that everybody is aware of that. Yes, mayor?
Yeah, so the, it should be the updated guidance, Planner Bag just posted it after the 18th, and meetings are encouraged to happen. The reason, one of the biggest reasons we did that is we wanted to make sure we had the proper guidance that you and Planner Bag worked on and that all the chairs were of, of these committees were aware of it and could ask questions and play around with the tool. So I would say fine to schedule meetings and, fine to schedule meetings, but when the, the committee chairs are comfortable using Zoom.
Right. One of the things, mayor, that Jeff Bag and I kind of learned is that the chairs have not seen that guidance, it hasn't been pushed out to them. So while it may be there, we still need to educate them that it's there and that they need to read it, and if they have any questions, they can follow up with us, because I think people are still a little bit in the dark about how to move forward, and, and I think we need to just kind of push information out as best we can to them about how to do that.
Okay, I thought we emailed them, but we'll do it again. I'll have Zoe call each one of them.
Yeah, it, it didn't quite make it out to, hang on, everybody, I see 47 hands. It didn't quite make it out to all the chairs.
Got it.
I've gotten some questions and I know others have as well.
Okay.
Dan has had his hand raised for about an hour and a half.
Not really. I am concerned about the technology. If you're going to have a meeting on the 27th, first of all, I think the Rank Choice Voting Committee is a committee of the council, so they should be using the council Zoom account. On the 27th, we have a rather important meeting on the budget and on the fire contract, which I want councillors to attend, so I would ask councillor Peak that you consider another night. Also, again, if you're using the Zoom account, they can't be at the same time. And just to be clear, there's a lot of committees out there. Are they using the mayor's account and not our account, councillor Coniff, with regard to setting up their meetings?
Wow, there are four or five accounts within the city, and various groups are using other ones. So the Planning Board is using the planning committees, the arts are using the planning committee. People should know which accounts that they will be scheduling their meetings into. If they don't, they can certainly reach out. I think, I think we have five accounts. No one, to my knowledge, should be using the mayor's, but I think everybody else has access to the other ones as they schedule them. Yes, mayor?
We have lent out, like, we have given access just because there, there've been, like, subcommittees and stuff. And, and the, the guidance, I think, also tells they should be using our city Zoom accounts and also recording, just like they would if they were in our conference rooms.
Yeah, one of the things that I spoke with the IT director, Ashley Barstow, about was setting every single account in the city with the same behind-the-scenes controls so that we're all uniform, and one of those controls is to record automatically to the cloud so that the chairs don't have to remember, it's just going to happen.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep. Councillor Peak?
Okay, so I guess the short version of the question that sparked all this is, we probably won't meet on the 27th because I would like to attend that finance meeting, and I also don't want to jam up the city council's Zoom account, so we'll have to circle back to that committee and figure out when we're meeting yet next.
Okay, great, thank you councillor Peak. Owen, I saw your hand up as well.
And I just want to make sure, councillor Peak, I, I know we were talking about the, the ordinance subcommittee of that, of the RCV committee. I don't think I've seen anything about that, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think we've seen anything since we last met.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. President Coniff, I have some questions for you about Zoom, and I'll ask you outside of council.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks. Barbara, I know you had your hand raised.
Okay, I, I just want to ask that everybody who has a meeting next week, you know who you are, if you could get the Zoom information to me by tomorrow, please, remember Monday's a holiday, and I really need that information if I'm going to post those agendas. So if you could get that to me by tomorrow, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Will do, Barbara.
Thanks, Barbara. All right, we have handled new business, old business, and all of the committee work. I will take a motion to adjourn.
No, no, adjourn.
Wow, I think it was eight motions. Who seconded that?
I seconded that if we did.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor?